All right, welcome everybody to the Conservation Commission meeting. Our first item is to accept the minutes of our October 1st meeting, which were very well done by Jack. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? All right, and I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes as written.
Oh.
Second, in favor, it's by the buyer. Thank you. All right, so this is a continuation of the public hearing from newly entered for a solar rotate and battery storage located at 66 North Union Street. So we get in time to look at the new materials. So I guess unless you have something new that you want to say, I will turn to the Conservation Commission members and see who would like to respond to these new. I thought it was Jack's on. Oh, thank you. If I could pick you out there that are just, you're just okay, or we just accepted the minutes of our October 1st meeting, and now we're continuing the public hearing from newly. And I asked the other Conservation Commission that a month to look at these changes, what questions they have. So Julie, you mentioned the question you had. Why don't you start?
So just to be clear, now the buffer zone is what? That in the new plan?
No, no. The plan for the water zones, as it stands right now, the initial, or the plan, which is, it does have some tree clearing within 50 feet of the 100-foot buffer, right? So we're basically avoiding touching the 50 feet with in proximity to any wetland resources, but outer 50-foot buffer, we do have some proposed tree clearing on mix of anything else out of the fence, because we cut trees, but leaves stopped to disturb the earth and the possible damage that is root system in place. But within the fence, which there are some areas generally more of the outer 25-foot buffer, there are some areas within the fence, and that will require near again stuff.
And does that mean that the scale back is working?
Well, the panels are scaled back. It's helpful, I can see your help, but the panels are scaled back. Anywhere that's with fences, basically the panels will be offset in plenty of ways, right? We have the 20-foot high pit will, between fence, plenty of array stars. So sorry, my plans are getting a little bit pretty cool here, but. So the red, so the green is the proposed tree clearing, and I was probably a little bit hard. The dark green is the wetland resource areas. The red line is the fence, so again, probably a bit hard to see, but for example, right, wetland resource starts here, 100-foot buffer is, I give that example, is over here. Wetland buffer, 100-foot buffer falls kind of in the array here. So that outer 50 feet, some of it will fall with the array and need to be stumped. But then anything outside of that red area, that like white area between red and what the green start, that's an area of, and I have a tree there, that might be more there, but that's an area where cut trees, but leave stuff.
Okay, the other question I've had at first, and it wasn't brought up last oversight, but I had asked, what, when you're done with this, and the other man said, then it gets sold to some friends, takes care of it, and who is that? And should that be known or was finished?
So the way is pretty standard for how solar facilities are developed. So it's, the entities, I know we have a, you know, a handful of, they're called IBT, Independent Power through their companies that are in the business of owning energy generating sets. So we develop it and will partner with them to build, and it's long-term, not operate at that term. So right now, you know, you don't have different, because right now, you know, they have permits, it's kind of the project may or may not happen depending on, you know, what the this board and the pin board decides. So that's why that agreement is in the future. What I will say is that I have, and I have one maybe concern, be like, well, how is permit get, you know, transferred to that? So the applicant, if you look at like what we apply, the applicant acts the actors out there, so going through the project company, and newly filmed that project right now, every permit, all obligation that come with that permit will apply and stuff. And that just gets transferred to.
I know I asked last time about you need for a soil scientist. And I think I learned that's up to us to require. Would that happen before the permanent issue?
Um, we would ask that, I think that's something that would be appropriate to be a condition of approval. You know, if everything is approved, the project, even fastest, it wouldn't be constructed, built now late next year or at earliest. So we would ask that that be a condition of approval. We get that done in the interim, make sure that there's nothing out there that's different than our assumption. Because we don't, we don't think that it would be, but get that done, we can even submit that documentation to the commission for review before we move into building permit.
Also, I feel to see how, and you're going to lose a lot of stuffs. You're clear cutting a lot of acreage, plus the fencing, plus the alley or clearing distracted outside the fence. There aren't going to be a whole lot of stuffs there.
Yeah, I mean, the area that we need to stump is a lot larger than that area that we're needing stumps. It's one of those things where we're doing what we can, right? Mitigating where we're possible, so rather than just stumping outside, even if it is smaller area, it's at least some area that we can minimize, mitigate, that's it. Soil is what my buffer.
Percentage wise, the whole almost 30 acres clear cutting seems to be small.
Yes, I can give you the numbers here. The tree clearing plan, I know, again, apologies, I know it's hard to see, everyone's familiar, has reviewed it prior to the meeting. It's like double cross hashed area is stumping, and then the single hashed area outside of you. Or some for remain in the air. The total acreages are about 24 acres stumping and about five and a half acres, way of saying.
Thank you. Also, the sedimentation provisions will all treat through a point source discharge, is that correct? A pipe that will drain down.
Yes, yes, so our stormwater, our permanent post constructions, stormwater system does feature, you know, we have four different locations, stormarmies, those will outplay via cover. Other than we have one that we are modeling or building as an installation. But that actually also will have a cover for larger.
Three and a half that of the four will have a point source discharge.
Sure, yeah, yeah, there'll be four culverts for each one, three or four.
Thank you.
Statements to the people here, because we're not used to having such a lot of in here meetings. Not many tonight hurts, past, and there's a good reason for that, and that is the town and especially the neighbors concerned about this project, because of the scope and the amount of disturbance that it brings up in construction. And so that's why we're here, and that's why we're going to be very characterless application of people. So I want to first point out what our role is as a Conservation Commissioner. I understand what we can do and not do. We are, our jurisdiction is to protect the weapons. And that includes enforcing the regulations as far as protecting the weapons from damage. And the reason why we want to do this, because of the benefits or effects of weapons in terms of preventing storm damage, allowing for regeneration of the groundwater habitat, and prevention of pollution. So this is the basic properties of wetlands in our sedimentation, the fact of. Now, our commission has, has our concerns, which I didn't mention already. But I'd like to point out that the best way to understand why we have these comparisons is to compare the before and after effects of development. Now, before the development, you have a functioning system there, posted trees and shrubs. And they took us a rain event, they tore or slowed down the flow of floodwaters into the wetland. Not only that, they provide for recharging the dumb line. And the, the trees there shade and cool the area, protecting the wetlands and the streams, as well as providing stuff there. Bet online. Do I need to give you anything? Okay, all right. Now, after the conversion of the land into a, basically a meadow, there'll be a severe disrupt of the soils because of the stumping, as well as the other processes going on. And now you'll have a situation where the soils are erosive, potentially erosive, and not stabilized. And of course, the applicant has made efforts to minimize that kind of damage. In addition, you've got over 1,600 closely spaced pens up there. It's kind of like having a big on the property, which was once had trees and shrubs. And the other thing is that the stormwater is going to be directed through channels through sedimentate, sedimentation basins. And those sedimentation basins are designed to empty relatively short time. I think you mentioned 24 hours or so.
Which is that the 72 hours?
72 hours, okay. And depending upon the amount of water in them, it will be released through a cover into the buffer zone, the wetlands. Now, the applicant has modeled the situation, and this is the usual procedure when you're on a big project like this. The mathematical model takes into account the expected amount of rainfall in a certain period of time. For example, this model is based upon a hundred-year storm, which is, I think you've mentioned like seven inches in 24 hours. That's probably, that's a pretty substantial rate. So they're taking a very conservative approach to the potential challenge to their stormwater system. And so they're, I will, having read their, their stormwater report, it indicates through the modeling that there will be no net increase in runoff into wetlands after the construction. That's one of the requirements of the Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook. Man, I should say. So they meet that, they meet that requirement. But this is such a big project and so much, so much disturbance that we need to be sure that these calculations are correct. We don't, we don't have the expertise to, to evaluate these things. We've never encountered this type of threat before. So I would recommend that we hire soil scientists to verify the soils, the characteristics of the soils. And that means this person would go out, they would look at the soils, examine the soils, and determine how capable they are for being rainwater, whether or not they're very erosion. Now, they, the applicant used a USGS soil survey, which they downloaded from the internet. And the only problem with that is that it's not very, it's not much of it is based upon actual sample of soil that sites. But it is topographical maps and area surveys. So we would like to get someone out there that actually on the ground, determine the characteristics of the soil, just to be on the safe side. And then the other part of this, we need to have a, hire an engineering firm to evaluate the stormwater system that's been decided. Make sure it will do what it is projected to do. So those are the two things I would recommend you do. So for the rest of the commission to see what they think.
All right, you've heard from the Conservation Commission. Anyone in the audience would like to speak? I've limited you to three minutes. So I know many of you were here during previous meeting, and we appreciate that you've returned. So if anyone in the audience would you like to speak?
Paige Sutter Lee, I am 82 North Union Street. I have a follow-up question that I've been thinking over. Regarding snow removal and keeping the site accessible in the winter, and how that might affect the wetlands. I know you mentioned previously contracting work out. Curious as to whether the plan allows for, I guess, spots for where the snow will be moved to. And then in terms of keeping it accessible, are you planning to use salt and sand or any sort of ice melt product out there? Protocol confirmed, police go, did that would go into the low water, it's close to the wetlands. I'm curious as to whether or not that could also then flow into wetlands as well.
Thank you, Frank, if you want to respond.
Sure, yeah. So as for the salt and sand question, no, definitely not salt. Really, no salty sand, not, not in the program. As far as the snow clearing, we haven't identified specific sites or locations on the site, because it is one of the less space constrained sites where there's ample space along the road for, for snow to go. And even within the row, within the array, there's plenty of space, so we don't have specific snow storage locations. I have a lot of complaints where there's, you know, there's plenty of space for this set of firms.
Thank you. Anyone else?
So snow, so did somebody go there to make sure the panels are all clear, that haven't worked?
No, great, great question. Apologies for not clarifying. This would just be for access, so just through the access. Yeah, the panels themselves are kind of self-clearing, right? Like, it's surprising how quickly after snowstorm, the kind of black panels, the door, the heat can slide right off. So, yeah, only for the roof.
Thank you.
Yes, if this will be so much, would you identify your picture? Or if I'm in a butter, the front end?
Thank you.
If there's going to be a lot of stump removal, and there's going to be a soil test, imagine a lot that will be filled. How will that soil be, where it will be brought from, and what will that soil be, and will that be part of the testing?
I can answer that, can everyone? So we're not bringing any, any soil. Stumps will be removed, and, you know, there will be some holes that will need to be graded smooth, but they're not, I mean, bringing in any material. It'll basically just be smoothing out the site using the material that's there.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ed?
The narrative I read, she said that there are two force force coming. I was wondering if only force have an issue by the way.
Well, they gave us additional material at the last meeting.
It's funny, my group reports, and this was the, I hadn't read the, the, I haven't read the rest of it in. Our application. One of my things is soil, this can't really issue an order or condition on a soil assessment plan or later than that. So these reports, whatever they are, and what it said, just said, reports will be issued at a later date. Really can't, you know, build a project if you don't know what's going to happen.
So I think that's what Jack was referring to, that he's interested in a source, additional one.
If that's, if that's the only ones that's happening, as a soil scientist.
Well, he's also concerned about the stormwater.
Right, so maybe that's the ones we're doing. They were, they gave a lot of information on some.
Yes.
A lot of information about, it's like, and what we call that, studying the zone. And, and you're, you know, you hired someone to do that, you didn't plan to take that site there.
Oh, I did do that, but with help from my call, that was done by me.
So there's a lot of information in this, says by somewhere who has a lot of expertise, and Jack and others that as well. I would like to see some of the detention basin, diet apps on this. One plan I saw had five detention basins, and I think the most recent one has four detention.
Got it? As you know, you know, we've been trying to kind of make adjustments based on community feedback or feedback, so there have been a few changes, and I, you know, apologize, I got a little bit confused, but sorry. But the latest plans, once submitted to the commission, the four base, right? One down here, one central, and then two on the east side, so.
I'm not, I'm not trying to see concern with the build out of this. I am very, very concerned about construction of this. And these basins are, you've told me in other meetings that they're going to use the sediment traps. I'm wondering how the detention basins are going to be modified, and actually trap sediment.
I'm not sure.
See that in the details, in newer details that you said. I just saw detention bases, those detention bases who capture sediment, designed the way they are in detail of the most recent.
Well, I guess I'm not sure exactly what you're looking for. I will say that, right, these are plans at this stage, are, you know, attempt asking for permits or approval. They will go further for construction, to construction level. Some of that detail may be added during the issue for construction drawn, which we submitted back to the town prior to, you know, fully building permit. If, if you let me know kind of more specifically what you're looking for.
What I would like to, the commission would like to see is, is a way to modify during the construction to trap sediment. Right now, they don't trap any sediment way near coast. And I think they're critical based on the amount of exposed soil, slope that's associated with that. And also the location of the existing wetlands that needs to be modification during construction things. And then they can, those, whatever you do, whatever you decide. I mean, I know what I would do, but whatever you decide to, just to the commission, that these structures will actually trap sediment, because I think there's going to be a tremendous amount of sediment leaving this site. It's a large area that's going to be totally exposed, the location of wetlands, you know, those particular areas. So I think that these are very important structures, along with the other erosion controls that she owns.
Thank you, and Robert, did you guys do?
Yes, I potentially have soil analysis from when my grandfather was alive. Granted, the property hasn't changed much, and he's been dead for quite a while, but it was done by Hill located down in Dalton. And I can also provide my soil analysis from when my septic system was done. And as far as any construction project goes, they all have to file, follow the mass TEP regulations for erosion. So I feel like it's a waste of time to ask them to provide more information for said procedures that they're regulated to use for the state.
All right, thank you. Okay, so we have heard a lot of information here. I'm just going to tell you what our choices are. We can approve this application and condition it if we feel conditions are necessary. We can deny it because if we feel they cannot condition them to meet the performance standards that we're interested in. We can deny it because we don't feel there is sufficient information. Or there's also, we could deny it because we don't want work done in the buffer zone. So we have those three choices of denial, or I guess we could postpone again for more information. So I'm going to throw my, the Conservation Commissioner's choices, yeah. Eric?
I'd like to go second and third.
I agree with Jack, I mean, I'm sorry, I'm not hearing because you don't have a performance, sorry, okay, all right.
I'm saying I agree with Jack, and soil testing, and be sure of that.
Would you go for approval, or would you postpone again?
Pardon?
Postpone until we have more testing.
You want to say those, Eric?
I agree with that, and if I may throw a question, what is the nature of the access road? Won't that be material project? Won't that be material project?
That will be, yes, that would be a gravel, crushed stone access road. So if that, the crushed stone. And that's, you know, sub base layer will be brought in. So that's really the only material. There's also crushed stone around the capat area. That's really the main material we brought in just for those areas.
I have to be the secretary too. All right, and my feelings and my belief are quite. Want soil scientists current information on this site. And we also want to have an, hire an engineering firm to evaluate the stormwater system. I'm not saying it necessarily is incorrect what you've done, but we just want to be sure because it's such a big project. And we do appreciate all the work we did.
I, I, I don't want to interject in the midst of your deliberation, but I guess just throwing out there what we've done. Other towns, right, either be a continuation while it's worked on or it could be, that could be conditioned. Sometimes we've worked on. Worked with a third party engineering firm that's working on behalf of the town. Kind of like in the interim work towards construction and, you know, a building firm, it will be approved by the comms team. If all those, if that engineering firm kind of signs off on it. So it's just putting that out there as an option at the commission. So that we have, you know, work with other towns.
So I think what you're saying, if we approved it with the conditions that we mentioned here, you could work with that.
Okay, Ed, to you. My twenty-five years of being a weatherman consultant, being a first conservation administrator for the city of Pittsfield. I find out that you could not condition it afterwards and be successful. There's always some glitch in the whole thing. You kind of have all the information upfront. So you can really condition this and really protect the wetlands. This business about putting in your conditions that they'll do this or they'll do that. It often doesn't happen. Just doesn't happen. And everybody has to be very vigilant about it and missions are busy people. Construction here, you know, busy people. You're better off putting it up right up front what needs to happen. That's the work I'm doing.
I'd like to add to that, that actually what I suggested are the recommendations of Mr. Stinson, the B C circuit writer. That's exactly what he recommends.
So in order to do, you want to come in here?
Well, I just wanted to question, you mentioned something about hiring an engineer. I guess I wanted to know. Who picks the engineers? Somebody that your organization picks or is somebody that they come? I was sad.
Do you, do you like digging better?
I, I don't know. Really, the truth is.
Usually we do. I, we do. In the past, we did for TCA.
This is such a poor project. My second opinion is he's going to the heart surgery or anything else. But I was saying, about something is support them, point to you and to me is extremely important. Unneutral and it's extent, setting impression of a woman or another. And so I want to make sure that, you know, you got to know your eyes, you cross out your Ts and that you feel absolutely confident that what. Is being proposed is going to work because it's too late. Everything's destroyed. That's the part. So I just honor and serve that person.
All right, the question in my mind, should we deny this until we, eventually we have our evaluation? Is it postponed?
Down beyond her, if you, well, do these additional markets other than the town.
All right, so then you want to remake the motion to postpone this? And is there a second?
Sure.
On later? All right, so this will be postponed. Sorry to drag this out, but I guess we need more information.
And Judy, just with Kathy Phillips, Maple Street, is there a timeline? I just want to make sure that there's a meter running on the taxi in terms of when this path will be approved. I didn't know from a postpone in perspective, if you have certain legal requirements to have this approved. I know with anybody, we have requirements in terms of when the box starts on. Just want to have an understanding of what the, how long can we postpone?
We don't have a time.
Okay, all right.
I mean, we officially need once a month. I would hope that we have enough information in a month that we could. And make a decision rather than drag this out already another month.
Is that realistic?
It's very difficult for you to consult at this time on a short notice. So it probably isn't realistic, but then. But we'll see, you know, we work on getting a consultant Friday. Yeah, we'll see what we can do. All right, so I guess we will close this hearing. We have some other. Excuse me, we are postponing this hearing. And our next meeting, we have to actually talk about that to let you know if we need the last. Wednesday, that's the evening, night before Thanksgiving. Otherwise, we could need in three weeks instead of four. So I'm just asking that this is. So then we'd be going into January.
Would you be problematic for soil samples?
Thank you, pardon.
That'd be problematic for getting soil samples if the ground's frozen.
Right, right. Well, we could start on that Friday.
Would it be acceptable for me to turn in the information that I have?
Sure.
Just if there's any discrepancies from what they found?
Definitely. We appreciate that.
Or if, if you, for each other dimension, currently potentially evaluate that material and if they sufficient. If they keep it sufficient for the soil sampling, then they could, you know, then they could do their stormwater analysis using that. And using a calendar, so I guess, just again, throwing that out as an option, could potentially expedite and not end. Alleviate some of the fieldwork.
All right, then I'm going to just say, let's plan on four weeks to see the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. Unless none of the, that either, everyone. Okay, so we, we will plan to need the last Wednesday of November. To see where we stand. Hopefully we'll have a consultant by then. And see if we can cover the soil, the various. Rainage and correct stormwater. Okay, so everyone's in favor of postponing. Thank you all. Yes, Linda?
Thinking of this discussion on the aquifers, would the soil sample testing give us any idea? Where those were and what can potentially be understood out of the?
I don't think so, but that would be something maybe we could ask them to do, especially the consultant. Because I know Kuhn spoke quite eloquently to the fact there was a spring there. And probably provided the water for the aqueduct that went right to the center.
And everyone will, that's true, true, that theory.
Okay, well, Linda, we'll think about that. Robert?
That property, the aqueduct on it right now is where my mom resides.
Is that right?
That is correct. If you want to take a stroll one day, I will be more than happy to show you the money hole.
Wow.
That it is. It's under about that much tree branches and I can show you exactly on the map where resides on her property.
Thank you. I'd be interested. Okay, so we will continue to see where this is, November twenty-four, the night before Thanksgiving. We'll all be thankful for that. Okay, so we have another item on our agenda. Which has to do with the question of the termination garden septic system, but I don't think rest of you would be interested in that.